I'll call a word of the Wednesday, January 2, 2019, meeting of Borough Council. It is 7:30 PM. Mr. Meckler, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Weisberg.
Here.
Ms. Rickards.
Here.
Ms. Pananopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Nixon.
Here.
Mr. McGreevy.
Here.
Vice President Teblin Moffett.
President.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch.
Here.
President Aaron Muter.
Here.
I would like to adjourn this meeting into executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
Okay.
And then we will reconvene. It shouldn't take 15 minutes.
15 minutes.
15 minutes.
Okay.
Sorry, guys. Thanks.
Sorry. Sorry, Barbara.
We're back.
You get what you get.
Yeah, not this.
Yeah. All right, we will, if Mr. West prefers. Okay. We'll reconvene into public session. Are we live on Facebook?
You are.
Yes, we are.
Thank you very much.
All right. We just met in executive session to discuss a personnel matter. We will now move on to President's comments. So, Council had previous discussions about all of our committees and how they are structured, and the number of meetings that we have, and sort of how that drives workload to the office. And I think there was a general consensus that we could look at all of those committees quickly and see whether there was an opportunity for some consolidation, and to do it in a way that would make all of our time more effective and make our work product more effective, because we have a lot on our plate. So, I have circled with many of you over the past few months, and I appreciate all of the feedback that I have gotten. This organization and the assignments that I'm about to assign are not really from me, but from all of you. Your strengths, your skills, your ideas about how we might work better together, and I really appreciate it, as we were working together as a group here. So, we're going to consolidate into three standing committees. The first committee is Finance and Administration. It will consume economic development, and it will also consume the administration and finance components of the Property Committee as it relates to Borough Properties, capital plan, et cetera. The Chair will be Jim Nixon, Vice Chair, Michelle Pananopoulos, and Member, Rob McGreevy. The Public Works Committee will now be called Infrastructure. And the Infrastructure Committee will be consuming the portion of the Property Committee that previously handled the actual property, use policies, things of that nature. Chair will be Bob Weisberg, Vice Chair Cindy Rickards, Member, Michelle Pananopoulos. The Public Safety Committee will continue in its role overseeing public safety. Chair, Gigi Teblin Moffett, Vice Chair, Rob McGreevy, and Member, Cindy Rickards. It is my hope in organizing things in a certain way that we can make everybody as effective as possible. So, one of the goals was that committee chairs are only serving on their own committee, and that the cross-pollination comes from the committee members, the Vice Chair and the member. And in doing so, balances the forces a little, so that the ideas from other committees that are going to cross-pollinate come from within the committee, and it's not a one-person show. I think the hope that I heard from many of you was that by doing this, we could be much more collaborative and have sort of sub-assignments within committees that are focused on our own strengths. And I know that the committee chairs of these three committees that I have spoken to are very supportive of that, so that we can move multiple projects along under these three umbrellas. The other change, you'll notice I only consolidated two committees, is a retirement of the Building and Zoning Committee. We've had many years that Building and Zoning has been a standing committee. Originally, it was a time when the public sort of came to council directly to have complaints, make requests regarding zoning and building issues. Since our adoption of the Universal Construction Code, our role into the International Fire Code, these are much less alive issues, they're much more complex issues than they were 40 or 50 years ago. They move in a more deliberative way in alignment with international standards, rather than focusing specifically on individual concerns. In fact, most of the concerns are addressed within these codes, it's just sometimes hard to find it, because it's long and complicated. But that's why we have professional staff who can do that. We also had a heavy lift, and thank Chair Bob Weisberg for helping us through the transition to the Form-Based Code.
Thank you, Bob.
It was a long project.
Yeah, thank you.
And there was a lot of guidance that that committee offered to the Planning Commission, and Coordination with the Office, and the County, and we crossed that hurdle. We crossed this year a whole set of revisions to that code, and so now it's going to be retired. I anticipate with this reduction that we will also have the opportunity, as needed, to create ad hoc committees that are truly focused on a single issue, either that grows out of one of the three standing committees or does not fit within them. It will address those issues, and then they will be retired and help us to focus and help us to recognize when the work is done, and it's time to move on to a new project. So, with that said, I would like to move to, well, I'll take any questions on that? Any issues? All right. I'll move to 3B, which is the discussion of the rules of council. I am sorry that I do not have, I pass this around, the marked-up copy that shows how far we got in the last meeting. But let's just move forward, and hopefully we can remember some of our discussion. The goal is really only to sort of nudge this along, so we're not going to spend the whole evening on this. Where we ended, my understanding was at the end of the first paragraph of Page 2. And then we begin at the second paragraph on Page 2. "The Borough of Norbert has a long history of volunteerism, contribute to its ability to thrive. When the Borough Manager is unable to allocate staff and resources, the manager should respect the work of elected officials and other community members who would like to expend time and resources to move those items forward." Those were suggestions that I received to add to this document, and I think it speaks to sort of how we want to work as a board. So, maybe we could have that conversation about how people feel about that paragraph, how that fits into what we're trying to do, which I hope is to become a Board of Directors, the guiding policy direction, rather than maybe writing policy, you know, like really deeply in the weeds of actually preparing an ordinance by hand, giving it to the solicitor for review. That's, I feel like we've done that in the past, and we've done it out of necessity, and it was right to do it. But I'm trying to, I'm hoping we can build an organization where if we need to do that, it's a sign of larger dysfunction.
That's right.
And maybe we can get out of that, but maybe, there's more ideas in the table.
Yeah, if you don't mind, President, I understand the genesis of this paragraph, and certainly no one would disagree that there's a strong culture of volunteerism in Norbert. I don't feel that, I made no secret that I, and I'm always speaking for myself, obviously, in trying to be somewhat of a change agent, in that I think we do need to change the political culture of how Borough Government functions. We have a professional staff for the first time in Norbert's history, and I guess I share your vision that we should function more like a Board of Directors. We're not, we should not be implementing policy, we should be creating policy. And I think that when we start to get council members involved in implementing policy, that it creates the opportunity for unintentional unilateralism and dysfunction. And I think that decisions need to come from within this room, they need to be made by the group, and that we need to at least allow our professional staff the opportunity to carry out the policy. I don't feel, as a member of council, if we're going to conduct this like a Board of Directors, which is really how a Borough Government is supposed to be conducted, I don't feel it's appropriate for us to get involved in actually doing the work of, I guess what I'd call the executive function of government, which is carrying, a Borough Manager system of government, you have essentially a lot of executive authority vested in your manager. And I don't feel it's appropriate for members of council, well-intentioned or not, to get into the business of holding that executive role. I understand that, like you said, in Norbert's past, there's, it was a different political situation. But now that we're moving into a more professionalized culture, and that we have such a dynamic staff that we can trust, I would at least like to take a year with these rules and just give them a chance to show us that they're as good as we think they are, and get out of their way, and just set policy.
Some more thoughts?
So, I think that I have a very different perspective on that, in that we, you know, we're elected to represent our citizens, and we have a community with a myriad of expertise and resources, and desire to contribute to the community, both on boards and commissions, but also in some of these kind of ad hoc projects, and we should leverage those resources and voices. And while that isn't doing the job of the Borough Manager, I think the reality is that we are elected officials, and that we have a responsibility to do that. And, you know, the two examples that I have in my short ear here has been the Plastics Ordinance. You know, that really came from 2050, and just the momentum of environmental stewardship in the community that really was a grassroots effort, that I don't think would have come necessarily from the Office, because it wasn't a priority on your radar. And we have to find some sort of balance where we can both represent and leverage the voices of the citizens, while making it, you know, organizationally make sense and efficient, in partnership with the Office.
So, let me throw out an example, then you could kind of spin this example in two ways, because I think it speaks to both of what you're saying. I'm going to throw Barbara into the mix.
Thank you.
Because, you know, Barbara, when she was on council, she had a lot of specific skills that were sort of totally can be, could be used by the Borough at that moment in time, very deep down, in some of the policy use agreements that we had, human resources, helping us to untangle our pension fund and understand what our obligations were. And that sort of is something that, in this paragraph, we kind of wouldn't want to do when Barbara was sitting here on council. But I could also see a scenario where Barbara, sorry, you know, comes as a citizen, as she is now, and says, "I have these skills and resources, and I would like to make them available, because I would love to help move this ball forward." But maybe rather than it coming from council, sort of like working with a council member and doing the work, and then sort of giving it to the Office, the Office could understand that they could take advantage of that resource, even though it's not a paid consultant. There can be some boundaries in understanding.
Yeah.
Obviously, can't deal with confidential matters or other things.
Right, sure, sure, sure.
But that you could leverage that. So, like, for example, with the Plastics Ordinance, I'll just propose an alternate history, would be council voted to say, "This is a priority, and we would like to adopt this by September 1st." Rather than the Office sort of trying to learn everything they can about it, and create that and work with the solicitor, to work with Norbert 2050, manager to attend a meeting to, you know, make connections, and have them do some of the work, hand it back, but the Office is sort of the one managing and handling it. And we know that they have the bandwidth to do that, because we have prioritized it, and we know that there was a priority slot to get that done.
Right.
Does that make sense as a way?
It does, yeah.
I think I have the language for it.
What's that?
I think I have the language for it.
Okay, I like it.
So, it works like this. "The Borough of Norbert has a long history of," and I think this is really well-written the way Michelle wrote it. "The Borough of Norbert has a long history of volunteerism that has contributed to its ability to thrive. In cases where the Borough Manager is unable to allocate staff, resources, and fulfillment of agenda items, the manager may work in partnership with officials and/or community members in accordance with the law."
Could we say "with the law" and the manager's discretion?
Well, it is "the manager may."
It's "may."
"The manager may work in partnership with officials or community members in accordance with the law."
I think that carries the spirit.
Yeah.
Michelle, it was your addition.
Yeah.
Do you have any thoughts?
No.
Okay. Well, let's, I see a lot of nods.
I can go with that, yeah.
Okay. Great. Let's go to the next paragraph. Let's do one more. "Elected officials agree that only council president can direct the Borough Manager. Elected officials continue to feel they can communicate with the manager, get information, get answers to questions, but that the conversation should be focused on getting information rather than opinions or issuing directives. The manager will attempt to provide requested information. If the manager believes the request is not appropriate or cannot be fulfilled, the council president would be looped in to give feedback to that person and communicate that, except in the case of the mayor, where the Borough Manager will provide that directly to the mayor."
I guess, I, the only thing, I don't have a problem with the second part, but the second part is more of a rule for Shaun than council.
Right. To me, it's like an agreement that kind of cuts both ways, and I think that's actually like, it's a handshake between the council members and themselves and the Office. And that makes sense to me.
I'm down with that. I guess, as long as we get the handshake back, if Shaun's okay with it, then I'm okay with it.
How about you?
Because I hear what you're saying, totally.
My notes, my notes say too granular, so if there's some misdirection of the process that's outlined in the paragraph but still achieves the objective, I don't want to be called on it because I didn't talk to somebody in the right order.
Can you think of an example?
Not at the moment.
Okay.
And your manager might be a woman someday, too, so change her, is her.
Wow.
What if I tell you the word "they"?
I've been doing that wrong since high school, and I feel like the world is finally catching up to me. Thank you.
I think, I mean, let me just, if Michelle would tolerate it, I'd like to ask the author of the second sentence. My, if someone said to me, "What do I think the second sentence mean?", it basically, "Hey, Shaun, if there's something that we, that somebody wants and you can't do it, you have to tell Aaron that you're not going to, that you can't deliver on it." Is that really, what are you getting at with the second?
Yeah, I mean, I think, honestly, only because I was trying to work within the framework that it already goes, like, or, I mean, my personal inclination would not be to say, "Shaun, you have to tell Aaron," it would be, "Shaun, you have to tell the person who asked you." But I got the feeling that we don't want that happening here, so I tried to make it, because it says, "Only council president can direct the manager," so it felt like we're very, like, hands-off, so I tried to kind of stay within that framework. But no, the idea was just being, saying, like, you know, "Look, if people are bugging with information, you can't get it for whatever reason, like, there should be, like, just, you know, give some feedback right away and say why," so that people know. That's really all, really all I was trying to get at.
It's really a situation where there's going to be an escalation. I mean, there, it's going to escalate to the council president from the council side, or it's going to escalate to the council president from the manager's side. But either way, it's going to escalate.
I'm, yeah, I'm just listening and taking it. I guess I just, so what language would you be okay with, Shaun? Like, what could we do as a, because it's a rule that really, I mean, it's binding Shaun, really.
Expectations, not rules. Yeah, I think you're, I think you're right. I think you're right. Yeah, right.
Whatever you want to call it, it says, "The manager will." I mean, you know, it says, "Jim will," and I agree to it. You know, if it's going to be a good fake thing, I think the person that is going to be bound, or, I guess we don't like the word "bound," if the person who's going to be morally obligated to follow what it states, or however you want to phrase it, you know, I'd just like to know, really, just what if it was something along the lines of, "The manager will attempt to respond to requests from electeds in a reasonable timeframe, and if he or she is unable to respond to a request within several X number of days, he'll notify the seeking party of the reason." It's just something like that. Is that, just basically saying, "Hey, if there's something one of us wants and you can't do it, or you don't have the time to do it, make sure you let us know." That's really what this is, right?
Thanks.
You wrote it, so I don't want to put words in your name.
I mean, I wrote this months ago, and that was the basic idea.
Yeah, okay. No, I'm just trying to understand.
Are you allowed to call him Shaun, Shaun? Or is it hands-off, we only go to Aaron and Aaron goes to Shaun?
What's this, direct?
I don't want, I don't want that changed.
No, I don't want that either. I want you to be able to call me directly.
That's why I keep asking.
Yeah.
So, I don't think we need it, because I mean, is there ever going to be a time where Shaun, just if one of us asks him for something, where he just, I don't know.
He hangs up? Goodbye.
So, do we want to work, do we want to work on a different sentence for that, then?
I'm just going to be clear. This is not a contact between Michelle, Jim, Gigi, you know, all of us and Shaun, but rather, these are expectations of this is how council and the Borough staff will work in a relationship.
In a sense, it's a contact between only the seven of us.
Well, the hope, though, is that this will live on, because it's guiding principles, so.
It's just that this sentence really doesn't pertain to how we interact at all.
Well, I'll say what. I'm going to call time.
Right.
If, maybe Shaun and anyone else who would like to rewordsmith that paragraph can do it, that would be great. And then, when we reconvene, I will have a, the next workshop meeting, a re-edited copy that includes all the changes to this point.
Cool.
It'll have, I don't know, two versions, we can probably decide on one of them, and then we can move forward to the next paragraph.
Okay.
Okay? All right, great. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Mayor, do you have any comments?
I do.
Yes.
I would just like to acknowledge today is the one-year anniversary of my becoming the mayor of Norman, Pennsylvania. And as well as many people. And I'd like to just acknowledge some of the changes that we've made during this last year. There's been a lot of changes to the police force, which is the primary goal, was my primary goal as mayor of this community. We now have a wonderful chief of police. We have a new officer. We have new policies in place regarding police patrols, overtime, checking banks, policies and procedures in the Borough. We are, we are organizing our force in a much more efficient and productive manner. And I'm very proud of the way that this is all coming together. Our enforcement of certain rules is escalating, our enforcement of our traffic safety rules is escalating. We are responding to the concerns of the citizens as they came to me when I was running, and that's all falling into place, and I would just like to acknowledge that. As we go forward in the year, we're going to continue to tweak and work on the rules and policies, and work with Borough Council, and public safety, and the Office, to continue to shape our police force to make it the kind of force that this Borough deserves, and that this Borough should have. And are we going to stop all crime and prevent any disputes amongst neighbors, or domestic, or whatever? I would love to say yes, but it's probably not going to happen. That's why we continue to maintain a police force. But we're doing very well here, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. I have some new initiatives as we go into the forward months, outside of the police force. I'd like to work on a little bit of policies and see what we could do to nurture our downtown businesses, and ways to increase foot traffic in our downtown businesses, and try and accommodate the citizens and shoppers with regard to the loss of some of our anchor stores, and see how we can make it a better place to shop and a better place to thrive. And we're going to continue to work on some of those policies and procedures with the downtown businesses. That's the next initiative. So, I just wanted to acknowledge these, and let's keep moving the Borough in the right direction. Robert.
Before we get to committee reports, which, let's see what reports we have, I wanted to mention, so at the next workshop meeting, we'll continue our discussion of the rules of council. Now that we have our new committee assignments and structures, and we'll have a few weeks, hopefully everyone can have a committee meeting in the next month before the next workshop meeting, we will have a discussion on the bandwidth of the Borough. That is to say, a list, a pretty exhaustive list of all the open projects and ideas that we have, what's currently being worked on, and how many big things and little things can be simultaneously worked on. And we can start to, I'm hoping, fill, make a consensus decision about what fills those immediate, and then what's sort of next in line, and over a period of months, work down the list, so that we can have everything in a priority, so that everyone can understand where their idea fits, where someone else's idea fits, and we can have a clear consensus of where everything stands.
Can I ask the following question for this?
Yes.
We had talked about, are we going to continue this quarterly newsletter, is it effective? Is anybody looking at it? I'm wondering if, if we do decide or don't, but for the purposes of just this rework, if it's helpful to have one more document that, you know, the three committees now can look at and think, "Okay, this is doing exactly what you just asked," and then something that we can communicate about that.
So, I have, I'll offer an idea, which is, each committee should discuss whether they want, whether they think about that.
Correct.
And the goal would be to publish something end of Q1.
Right.
By, say, a little time to figure out what you want to say.
Okay.
So, if we have additional items that we want to be considered for the agenda, just send it to you before the next meeting?
Send them in.
With the next two weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's a month, to the February workshop meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm going to, you know, we've lost it a little bit, I mean, our agendas differ, but we've had so much business on the table, some differences between a workshop meeting, where we sit and go over it, talking paragraph by paragraph, versus a business meeting where we just sort of vote, vote, vote. You know, when Shaun came in, he tried to have a nice structure there, we lost that a little bit, just it was overwhelming, the amount of business to be done.
Yeah.
Let's see if we can't get back to that, because I think it provides a nice pacing and an expectation of what you're actually walking into every, every meeting. So, committee reports, I will call on the new chairs, and they can, if you have something to report, and you can draw on your other council members as needed, because we're in a moment of consolidation.
Absolutely.
So, I'll start with public safety.
Thank you so much. Mr. McGreevy, being new to the committee, we will obviously speak with Shaun about what, if there are any changes. We generally meet on the second Wednesday of the month at 8 o'clock in the morning. That may not work for you, so we'd be willing and going forward, obviously, to consider a change there, and what would be needed. And then, there are, of course, leftover items from last year, or the year before. Uniform property maintenance, we know is being advertised, as well as the changes to UCC, fire code. But the, we'll just, you know, meet with Shaun and have a conversation with when times or dates are needed to be changed. Thank you.
Infrastructure.
Just like to set up our monthly meeting, if possible, Cindy and Michelle, and I'm wondering if we could do that on the fourth Wednesday of every month, and also make sure that that works for Shaun as well. That would put us the Wednesday prior to the workshop, or usually, that would put us on the Wednesday prior to the workshop.
Could we do it before, first, oh, at 8:00 AM?
Uh-huh. At 8:00 AM, on Wednesday, be it the fourth Wednesday, 8:00 AM.
I can commit to always being at 8:00 AM on Wednesday, but I can try my best.
Or just later in the morning work there?
No, it just, if I have to, I have to.
I mean, is there a particular day where an 8:00 AM or 8:30 would work?
Not Wednesday would be, or Friday would be the easiest.
Friday's best.
Yeah. For public work, we're talking about.
This is, this is infrastructure.
Yeah, or infrastructure.
Right. So, we could do Friday.
Michelle.
8:00 AM, Friday, the fourth Friday.
Um, probably.
Okay. So, the fourth, so.
There is no fourth Friday in February?
Oh, the last Friday.
No, there is one.
Hold on, leap year still.
Friday or Friday.
Sorry, I apologize.
There is, every month has a fourth.
So, this would be. Actually, there, there actually, no, there actually isn't a fourth Friday, is there?
There's 22nd. My bad.
Oh, that's true. Okay.
It's 28 days, seven days.
At least going to divide.
Tuesday before the third Wednesday.
Okay, so that done, that was the only thing we needed to do as a committee during this workshop, but there is this transitional thing.
It's not.
Where the work of this Public Works Committee joins the work of the Infrastructure Committee. So, I'd actually like to turn things over to Cindy to address all the items that were covered in the last Public Works meeting.
Sure.
So, you're giving that a report.
Okay. Just a few notes for the public. Christmas tree collection is January 12th, 19th, and 26th. And just a shout-out to the Shade Commission, who planted 18 trees within the Borough just in November, in 2015. Okay, so that done, that was the only thing we need to do as a committee during this workshop, but there is this transitional thing where the work of this Public Works Committee joins the work of the Infrastructure Committee. So I'd actually like to turn things over to Cindy to address all the items that were covered in the last Public Works meeting.
Sure.
So you're giving that a report.
Okay. Just a few notes for the public, Christmas tree collection is January 12th, 19th, and 26th. And just a shout out to the Shade Commission, who planted 18 trees within the borough just in November, in 2015.
That was awesome.
The Windsor Avenue, we are looking in late January to have a public forum to talk about the Windsor Avenue corridor project.
My friend used that?
That would be late January, I don't know if you have an update about that.
I don't have a date yet.
Okay. To be determined. At our last meeting, it was brought up just to review kind of the state of our sidewalks, and we asked Sean, you know, what is the current accountability of sidewalks? And he reviewed that, that the property owner is responsible for the repair, and that neighbors can call if there is an unsafe sidewalk, that that's something that they can call the office. And we really can talk about the use and occupancy of permits to buy, which happens in any real estate transaction, that the sidewalk is evaluated. And in the future, we can talk about our sidewalks and accessibility. We didn't have time to really do that justice, that actually conversation happened very quickly in response to a question we got from a citizen. The Plastics Ordinance, it's been, thanks to the EAC and Rob McGreevy, there has been just a FAQ that is now posted online for businesses, it's been emailed to the NDA and the NCA, and a paper copy will be distributed this week to each of the businesses. And really, the majority of the conversation happened really around how through the then Public Works Committee can we support an increase in new neighbors coming into the community? And I really felt that through the perspective of Public Works, that we could invest in bike infrastructure, because if we are trying to attract residents and neighbors who are dedicated to alternative transportation, then it behooves us to invest in the infrastructure that supports that alternative transportation grant that Michelle started this time last year. So as we were having these conversations about new developments in 114 Forest, actually talking about the bike racks that go outside and inside, I had asked Aaron, hey, is this something that we can bring up again? He suggested I ask Sean, I said, hey Sean, is this something that we can bring up again? And it came to the committee table. I asked Kimberly Beazac to come as the founder and director of the Narberth Cycling Club, and just do kind of a State of the Union, what's the regional and the local progress and culture of the biking community? And I can't repeat what she said, my minutes are actually posted online, her presentation is posted online, she presented so many really interesting maps where we are actually, we being Narberth, are called out as a destination location in the regional biking maps. Additionally, Sean brought, and Kimberly called out, that 10 years ago, what was that, 2006? Over 10 years ago, it was recommended that we put bike racks at certain locations in the community, and interestingly enough, the parking study identified the same exact locations. Culturally, the biking transportation in our community has changed so radically, when Michelle first put this grant together, there were pictures of bike racks that had no bikes. And I actually think Sean pointed out, hmm, you're applying for money for bike infrastructure and you're showing that nobody is really biking? It's radical, the difference now. Largely, you know, not only the biking culture that Kimberly originally, that's happening, but Ed said, you have bike racks that you didn't know were there. I didn't believe him, we actually had to go walk. And he pulled them out, repurposed them, and put them in places where now we have pictures where there's not enough space for the bikes, so people are locking bikes to trees, which we don't want, to signposts. So we're really in a different position than we were a year ago, and a lot has happened regionally, where I can appreciate that this may feel rushed, but I think it's pretty opportunistic. So this is all to say that I think that we should reconsider the work that Michelle started a year ago. I have some details in language on the Monaco 2040, but it really calls out destination communities, and particularly bike infrastructure. So we talked about, that is one way that we can support an increase of residents and neighbors. And the second is to really have policy, and that is parking policy, right? So people that move into 114 Forest are going to understand with potentially new parking policy that they're not going to be eligible for a sticker. So your option is, you have a car and you pay each month, right? I suppose you could theoretically use a meter every half an hour running out there, but that doesn't seem likely, where you're going to be someone that uses alternative transportation, or you realize you're going to have to park at a convenience park. And then that, we will have a self-selected population of people that are choosing to live in a community that's dedicated to alternative transportation. And I think, given all the data on millennials and generations Ears, the expectation that you have one or less car because you're going to be using a train, biking, Ubering, is a progressive statistic that we're going to reflect in policy.
Let me ask a question, regarding the biking and the application for grant money, where, what is the timeline, what do you?
May I actually interject?
Yeah, please do.
Of course, I apologize for interrupting, but I think, I just wanted to, your enthusiasm for this, for this work is infectious, and I just really want to acknowledge that, because I, I think, I think it's really important that we see the, how exciting this, the biking, actually, the emergence of the Narberth Cycling Club that has this kind of voice in our community is really, I mean, it's extraordinary. And their enthusiasm for biking is contagious too. But I think the question is, like, for you, Mr. Council President, is like, in 2019, the council is going to be establishing some goals for the communities, some council goals, and some goals for our borough management, to sort of, to benchmarks that we'd love to see as a council be kind of hit. And I think, probably, I have yet to see the infrastructure agenda, you know, so I don't know what items we'll be dealing with exactly, beyond like, general, you know, effect. I mean, there may be a lot of issues that we're dealing with that we never discussed, because they are the day-to-day work of the borough managers, and that's what they do, they deal with maintaining sewers and infrastructure, and playgrounds and things like that. But there certainly isn't this question of whether or not the council wants to devote resources to the condition of the grant and to the infrastructure improvements that Ms. Beazac presented at the last meeting. And I think that's the question that we want to ask our colleagues, is whether or not that's something we would like to see made a priority, and then, you know, with the borough managers, then get back to us and say how that fits within the larger scheme priorities.
I agree completely. Where I was going with my question was sort of, what does council need to do, and then what is the lift on the office to make this happen?
You said it in fewer words.
So we can understand what we're dealing with here.
I don't know if that goes back to you, Cindy, or Sean has an opinion or information?
Well, that's what we're working to figure out, we're meeting on Friday, myself, Cindy, and Kim, and Ed will join us to talk through more of that, and hopefully, I would like, from that exploration, to have a project that's scope-defined and accurately budgeted within the lens that we have right now, the clarity that we have right now, so that the next time this council meets again, I can get, we can build consensus, and if the council members agree and buy in that we want to invest time, traffic engineering fees, borough managers' time, assistant managers' time, in developing the maps and the information that puts together a good grant application, that we do that only after council has said, we really want to see this happen, we really want to make it happen. Because I think that's the point where we'll go from thinking through ideas, which is the easier part to do, and putting things together, to the harder part in terms of taking the time to figure out how the decisions and the plan comes together. And that's that investment point, and the time that I would need council to say, yes, go ahead and do this. But I don't know yet, Bob, where it fits in the, a big picture of 2019 infrastructure projects. I know that this infrastructure biking grant is probably on, is probably a lower complexity problem to solve, if you want to think of it like a math problem, it's lower complexity compared to the other kinds of problems we're going to be dealing with related to infrastructure in 2019.
And there's certainly an interrelationship between the goals of the parking, of creating parking policy and the biking infrastructure. And I think that was demonstrated to us by the presentation.
And economic development.
A few things that would help me before I had an opinion on this, I guess I would want to see the policy and the goals before we looked at how we were going to pay for it. Because if it's a good idea, it's something we should look at doing irrespective of funding source, it would help, and I think Sean was getting to this, I would want to see resource allocation in terms of hours and dollars. I'd be interested in knowing what elements of bicycle infrastructure would be just an upfront cost, and are there any elements that are an ongoing cost, the things that require maintaining maintenance? And I guess I just want to be sure that I'm open to this, at the same time, I want to be sure that we're not taking this because somebody brought it up now and placing it ahead of the things that are on our agenda. I just want, I would want those questions answered, like, I would love to know, I don't know what the global list of projects we're working on, and I know the office has a list of things that it's working on, I don't want something else to be adversely affected. And having answers and information to those points would help me formulate a more intelligent opinion, I'm not going to weigh in until, I personally, I wouldn't feel comfortable weighing in for or against something until I knew, you know, what's it going to cost? Is anything being displaced, et cetera?
And the office is probably in a really good pace, place to contextualize the bike planning. Given that, I think the first study was done in 2006, there was a commission to study that was done in 2006, there's biking stuff in the open space plan, there's biking stuff in parking policy, there's, you know, like, we've sort of been, there's a lot, there were many times, traffic engineers were hired, and traffic calming was acknowledged, that the streets are part of the, are the space shared by the public for biking, for pedestrians and for cars, not cars primarily. And it's sort of a lot of ways in which this does work towards meeting goals that happen and that are in mind, objectives that Borough Council's before us have had already put on the table.
Yeah. And we have Ed, that we didn't have last year. We have an Ed. We have an Ed.
I think, I think you're all asking for the same thing, which is, how does this fit in? And what exactly are we talking about? And it sounds to me like there is a plan to get that to council at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay. So, but you wanted to, maybe a little more specific.
Oh, me, I would just, I just would want to know, what's the cost? What are our, what are our goal, like, we're pursuing a grant for bicycle infrastructure, and this is, I guess this is a philosophical issue, but I, when I'm doing something, I don't look at getting, going into the money, it's like, what do I want to do? And then I look at how I'm going to pay for it. So I would just, personally, I think it makes more sense to bifurcate it. I mean, if this is really something that we're serious about, if we decide we're serious about doing it, whether or not we get a grant this March or April really shouldn't dictate whether or not we do it globally, right? I mean, if the grant was denied, but we, seven of us really want it, and there's a basis for it in the community.
Look at that.
So I just, like, I would want to see us come up with, not just get money for the sake of getting it, but let's have a list of, like, what are we going to do with it? And then, what are we going to do if we don't get the grant? Or when can we, maybe this should be something that we look at throwing into the CIP down, the Capital Improvement Plan down the road. I just wanted to linger, resource allocation, I'd want to know what elements of bike infrastructure are one-time costs and what, like, a lot of people, like, that Small Towns, I'm going to sound like I'm old and I'm a millennial, but the Small Towns blog, Facebook thing, and they talk about when the federal government grants, the state governments give grants, but there's also a lot of long-term maintaining costs that people don't think about when they're getting the free thing. I would just want to know, what is it that we're getting that's, just, we get it, and it's a bike rack, right? You painted it every decade, whatever. But is there anything to this? I don't know bike infrastructure, is there anything to this that's going to be an ongoing yearly bill or yearly, consume our staff on a yearly basis? And the last thing, I was, you know, I don't want to see this displace, like, it's good that you brought this up, and clearly there's a sect of our community that wants it, but there's also a lot of needs and wants, and we can't just put something to the front of the line if it's going to displace something else. I would just, and I mean that, like, pure from my heart, I just want to know what else is in queue, and is it, is this something that we should, maybe, maybe Sean comes back with the answer to this, and it's like, oh, this should go, we should get this out in February, or maybe it's, what's the rush, we can do this next year and do this now? I just want more information.
And we'll have those details for your next meeting, probably, Michelle, you can come in. We're really, we're talking about two fix-it stations. So I think, when we're saying bike infrastructure, we're not talking about bike lanes with, secure bike lanes. You're honestly, we're near ready to do that kind of planning at this time.
Really? So, but I think, that's what I was hoping the office would tell us.
Oh, the office, yeah.
I was hoping the office would tell us, what is the it?
Yeah, right.
And what are the options on the it?
It was the it, we're going to.
Is the it shadows?
Is it the Windsor Avenue project? What does it fit together?
I think what Cycling Club recommended, which is really, I would listen to them also, because they have a lot of wisdom to offer, was that having a fix-it station, having some signage located in, both, all of these in the station circle, I think they recommended, some kind of signage that, so that when visitors were brought to our town, because there was a fix-it station, and because there was, like, you know, some bicycle infrastructure. Like, if you have a fix-it station, for example, you're on a map that's like an app, like, oh, there's a fix-it station there.
What is a fix-it station?
It's just basically something, people hoist their bike up, they can do some repairs, they can fill these tire pumps. It's an outdoor.
Like, what equipment, like, is there stuff, are we going to?
The oil will share, we'll share.
Yeah, there's like an air pump, and there's some, they're like about two or three
man, batteries, there's one on half for its campus, you can see. So it's like, it's kind of, it's a basic thing. I think they suggested near that, having some signage, just, here's some trails in the area.
Right, right.
Upgrading the fountain in station circles would be, which doesn't work at present anyway, and turning it into a bottle filling station. And I think, and some bike racks, I think was suggested.
Water for dogs, water for dogs.
Upgrade a bike racks in station circle, bike hitches on parking meters throughout the downtown, a bicycle rack outside of this building, and some, maybe a rack at the library or the park, I can't remember. I think that was the, basically, the scope of things they thought would constitute some ground-level, basic upgraded facilities and infrastructure that would, would sort of signal, hey, Narberth's on the map as a biking destination, come here.
So I'm, I'm open to this.
That was their recommendation.
I guess one concern I have, and I want to be really careful in choosing my words, but just because a group of active citizens wants something, doesn't mean that it goes to the, it doesn't mean it should go.
That's not.
I'm not, you don't know where I'm, I watched the meeting, let me finish talking. I don't think it means it should go, like, there's also a sect of the community that wants their sidewalks fixed, there's a sect of the community that wants the parks fixed. We have a long list of things that, and I just want to see, I want to see this incorporated with the same respect and priority that are other, sometimes I don't think that we focus enough on core municipal functions. And it's something I haven't been shy about saying, and I'm going to keep being an advocate for core municipal functions, and I just want to make sure that this fits into our agenda of, this is a nice, but this is not a core municipal function, I want to make sure that we're checking all the boxes on our core municipal functions, trash, sewer, stormwater, sidewalks, parks, things that, I don't, I think we all agree that we haven't done yet. And that's what makes, gives me a little bit of agita in this group sometimes, is we spend a lot of time on things that aren't core municipal functions. So I just don't want to see this consume a lot of resources at the expense of our effort to improve core municipal services.
I'm actually going to, I'm going to shut this down, because we're expecting a proposal that answers almost all the questions that we have.
Yeah, right, great, okay. To clarify, this is not a reaction to the NCC, rather, this was a heading that said, how through Public Works, what methods do we have through policy to support an increase in density? And that was parking and alternative transportation. And then I called upon the NCC to say, wow, you're experts in this area, can you come help inform us? And then dating back to 2005, and then 2000, parking.
Okay. So we're expecting more information, everybody's on the radar. I don't think it would be a bad idea at this point, if people want to email each other, because we have at least two councils, three council members who know a lot about this. So let's, let's educate each other.
Before I finish the infrastructure report, I just want to make sure there was nothing more Cindy, or who was the other, who were the other members of the?
Robina.
The Gigi have.
Nope, Cindy covered it very well.
And then I also wanted to ask Aaron, for our agenda, I'm picturing a kind of a three-part agenda. The agenda that we get from the council president and the office, which is actually our live working agenda. Then there's a second part of the agenda, which are all the issues that are public works related, but we're actually not discussing in our meeting. And then there's a third agenda, which are sort of all the things that members of council or the public would sort of like us to be doing, that we're not doing right now either. Sort of like, but a way for them to just sort of live on the dashboard, to live on the page, you're like, you want to see these things happen, but we're not, they're not, we're not doing them now. we're not doing them now.
Right.
So would we, will we as a committee see that agenda? Will it come from you or from the office?
So the goal is for these three new committees, for the agenda to come from the office every month, and to come to the chair, and to have an opportunity to make, just, I want to add this, I want to change that. But it's really driven by the office, and one of the reasons is because as difficult as volunteers for us to sort of get those agendas out on a schedule and make sure they're done every month. And meetings without agendas tend to not be effective meetings. We all know it, but we still do it, right? So in our best interest, go in that direction. This, so that's the first list of, this is what you're talking about this month. Your second list is almost sort of informational items, things that are happening where you might offer an opinion, but...
Always happening in the background.
Right. And those are things that I think will be informational on those agendas for the monthly meetings. The third is that sort of wish list or things to do, to-do list.
Yeah.
And I think that's more of where we were talking about, the bandwidth of council as a whole.
Yeah, sure.
And then that goes down to each committee, because there are things that are sort of, well, it's going to take the office a lot of work to do this, so there needs to be an allocation for that, but there's also committee time. And it may or may not also need a lot of office time to have those conversations. And when we talk about our prioritization, that's sort of the master list, and then things would come off and sort of go to a committee, so that they can, they can fit in their slot. Does that...
I think, I mean, then if there's something, say, that emerges from the committee, it bubbles to the council, then the council decides if it goes on the actual live agenda or not.
It may go to the top of the list, because it's urgent, it may go in the middle, it may go to the bottom, like that. But then we all know where it stands, and we don't have to sort of come to meetings being like, what about that thing? We haven't talked about that for six months. We'll know where it stands.
Thank you, that's all, that's all for our report then.
Finance.
Yeah. I'm really excited to have Rob on board. Welcome to Finance Administration, Rob, and it's pleasure keeping Michelle. And Gigi, thanks for all your work in 2018.
You're welcome, and goodbye.
Yeah. I guess we haven't had a meeting since our last council meeting, but our focus for the second half of the year was on the budget. I think we can be really proud of that. It's a responsible budget. It also happened to not increase taxes. I think it's something we can all hold our heads high about. I emailed Rob and Michelle just now about scheduling options, and if the current schedule works for you, that's terrific, and if not, we'll come up with something that works for everybody. Finance Administration, we don't cover the sexy issues, but the stuff we cover is important, and I'm really looking forward to working as a team with Michelle and Rob next year, or this year, rather, I'm still in the 18 in my mind. Agendas have been coming, I've been making agendas with Sean since day one, and we're going to continue to do that. So I would ask, please, this is an ask to Michelle and Rob specifically, that if you feel comfortable and you have a top three or a top five list of things that are coming from property and economic development, that would fall under Finance Administration, that you would like to see not get lost, that are on your mind, could you please just email it on to Sean and CC me, and, you know, we'll get him on, on the agenda? I don't want to see anything fall off. And as far as the way the agenda is on FNA work, it's just, anything you ever want on the agenda, just same thing, just email Sean and please CC me, and we'll do it that way. But that's all I have, and I'm really excited to continue to focus on, on finances and core municipal services, and I think we'll have a really good 19 in Finance Administration.
Thank you. All right. We'll move to public comment. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on any issue facing the borough?
No.
Hearing none. We will move to action items. Number seven, appointments to boards and commissions. We always sort of do this differently.
Yeah, yeah.
And one day we'll find a way we're happy with.
Keep it creative.
But what I'm going to suggest, I'm going to go with boards, we're just going to get a lot of business out of the way. Where I don't, based on my conversations with not all of you, but some of you, don't think there's a lot of discussion and debate, we'll cross those off our list. So would someone like to make a motion regarding the vacancy board? The only application we have is Ira Winston, it's a one-year term, he has re-applied.
I move to appoint Ira Winston to the open space, or to continue on vacancy board.
I second that motion.
Seconded. Any discussion?
Welcome back, Ira.
Hi.
Hi. Ira.
Oh, he's not here.
Yeah, I'm sure he's watching.
That's right.
Industrial Development Authority, there is one opening, Amy Lempert, would it like to be reconsidered? She is currently the chair of Industrial Development. Is there a motion?
President Muir, I would move that Borough Council reappoint Amy Lempert to a new five-year term on the Industrial Development Authority. I work closely with Amy, because I'm the preceding chair, and Amy's been doing a really good job.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Lempert. Human Relations Committee, we did appoint Mina Sipe, and she had a very short term, because of the staggering of the terms. She would like to be reconsidered. She's only served a couple of months.
I move to appoint Mina Sipe to the, to retain her position on the Human Relations Commission. For how, what's the term?
For your term, staggered? Sorry, I don't know. I think it was...
It shows, it means whatever the next...
For the term that's currently open, and she will fill that spot. There you have it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Erin, any discussion?
Yeah.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
Each of you. All right. Unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Sipe. Rec Board.
Yeah, Mr. President Muir, and I think this is the last one I'd like to chime in on tonight, but I'd like to nominate Krista Stopp to the fresh open term on the Rec Board. It's my understanding that she's recently been selected as the vice chair or the vice president, I don't know how they delineate that, of the Rec Board. And just seeing all the work that Krista's done for Sabine Park and our community, I couldn't be prouder to move that we reappoint her to a new term.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations, Krista Stopp. Now, let's talk about civil service. There's one opening, John Gonzalez says to be reconsidered.
I'd like to make a motion and nominate John Gonzalez for the six-year term, I believe?
I think it is.
Six-year term of civil service commission.
Is there a second?
All second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, civil service. Our zoning hearing board, two individuals are up for two openings, they are both currently serving, would like to be reconsidered. So Duckworth and Bob Careless.
Mr. Council President, I'd like, I move that we reappoint Mr. Joseph Duckworth and Mr. Robert Careless to renew terms on the civil service, excuse me, on the zoning hearing board.
I would leave it separately.
Do we? Can we do them together?
I mean, yeah, I think you're right.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Second, okay. You're right, we could...
Any discussion?
The length of the terms, do we have any, we don't have any sense of that? And how long, I know that Bob was just recently appointed, but I'm just wondering how long Mr. Duckworth, just from my own knowledge, I'm not used, you know?
That's a good question, because some of these boards and commissions have multiple, like a five and a three, and some are just five.
I believe the zoning hearing board's a three-year term.
That's what I thought.
I think it is.
Yeah.
I believe it is, but I don't think it matters to the commission.
Right. Okay, that's fine. No, no, right, I'm just wondering.
And I would just say that both Mr. Duckworth and Mr. Careless bring expertise that's relevant for assigning hearing boards, you know, they know how to read zoning, and they have expertise in that area, and they've been doing it.
I would like to add, I think that, you know, rather than just sort of, I, I, you know, this is, we're currently having a discussion to bring to the next meeting, that many of our conditional use hearings...
Yes, that's right.
Move to special, become special exceptions, where they still are heard in a similar manner, but instead they're heard by the zoning hearing board, which is more of a judicial body, but actually is sort of equipped to handle that. And in, so in some ways, they, you know, rather than sort of a zoning hearing board that, by all means, in the borough has been asleep almost all of the time, I think since I've been on council nine years, they've met twice.
A lot more than that.
Yeah?
Yeah, definitely.
I think it's a free time.
Three?
Six or seven.
Okay. And on matters that...
I don't like four hearings, they do. I was going to say four, five, two years.
Well, they must be keeping it quiet. Because I'm not getting any complaints, so, want to reappoint? But anyway, I just, I just want everyone to realize that we're actually going to be handing more control over, you know, sort of evaluation of applications to these individuals.
So are you saying, and forgive me for being so blunt, are you saying, is that a dodo, or are you saying you'd like to wait on these appointments to see if others apply?
I am comfortable with these, personally comfortable with these.
Okay. No, my question was honest, like, crazy.
But I feel like I would not be doing my duty if I didn't call it out at this moment.
Yeah, right.
I'm comfortable with it.
We're going to appoint someone to a multi-year term, at the same time we're going to be handing their commission a lot of control.
Right, that's why I said, don't they...
I really, no stop text.
So really, we're highlighting, we're highlighting the importance and perhaps increasing importance of the positions to which Mr. Wiseport may to nominate.
I didn't say that as succinctly as I should have, yes.
Should we call a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Should they go in there?
It was her name. All right. Now let's talk about, well, Shade Tree Commission, we have no applications received. So we just talked about how great it was, we planted 120 trees in the past couple of years.
Right.
You know, the canopy in this town doesn't sustain itself, it doesn't just happen by magic, it happens by work of volunteers. If you have any interest in trees, or the tree canopy, or you just like enjoying the benefits of trees, the Shade Tree Commission is the place for you. Please submit your application.
Can I pause for a second?
Yes.
I want to clarify the, what just happened. Mr. Careless is an alternate on the zoning hearing board, and gets reappointed every year.
Okay.
Okay.
And Mr. Duckworth is a regular member of the zoning hearing board.
Can I make, someone make a motion to clarify that they're being reappointed?
And those are three-year terms, and Mr. Duckworth's terms, when I looked here and I saw two terms up, I realized, on every, on a three-person board, you're only reappointing one every year, so I got a...
Yeah, yeah. Should we, should we, since Bob made the motion, should we ask Bob what, well, because the order could be changed as well.
How do we withdraw?
Just make a new motion to clarify.
Okay, I'm, I'm, for clarification, I'm going to make two separate motions.
Okay.
First, I move that we appoint Mr. Joseph Duckworth to a three-year term on the zoning hearing board.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Secondly, I move that we appoint Mr. Robert Careless for his, a renewal of his one-year term as an alternate to the zoning hearing board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so clarify, thank you. All right, sorry.
Erin, on the Shade Tree, we have no applicants, but Bob Wiseport volunteered. So I'd like to nominate Bob Wiseport for the hearing.
Bob, do you admit to this in public?
If I get a second, I'd...
I'll second.
I second, absolutely.
Yeah, you're on, you're in.
I would really be honored to...
Jim Spear, get him a shovel.
All in favor?
More trees, yeah.
That's great.
Aye.
All in favor.
Good.
Congratulations.
Nice work, Bob.
Thank you, it's my pleasure.
Okay. See, that, that one less committee meeting a month is going to go.
Yeah, exactly.
Take it, suck it right up.
Two less.
All right, we'll put you on something else.
Put us to shame, Bob.
Okay, so I take away, I mean, if you're interested in Shade Tree, I would still love to hear from you.
Yeah, we still need you.
Shade Tree is an organization where there's actually a lot of opportunity for volunteers in addition to just the, sort of the members of the commission.
Well, that's why I decided I wanted to join, because I had been out for the digging of the, you know, and planting of the trees, and it's so, so much fun, and...
It's very satisfying to plant trees.
It's a great way to contribute for a long time to the community, because the trees live way beyond our time.
Yes, amen.
They do. Civil service, we need an alternate, there have been no applications.
Two alternates.
We need two, we can fill two.
We can fill two.
Yes, we can fill two.
It's possible to fill two.
We have no applicants.
Right.
We would love to hear from you in the community, if you have any interest in how civil service does hiring, how police officers are hired, if you have some legal backgrounds or some expertise in labor law, or maybe you don't and just want to learn, this is a great opportunity. You're the alternate, so you're not necessarily in the hoxie.
Exactly.
You have a nice place. Easy in.
Easy in.
Please put in your application. Let's see what we've got left here. Planning Commission.
Okay.
We have two openings. Michelle Condo is currently serving and would like to be reconsidered, and we received a number of resumes. I know that Bob has some thoughts, so maybe, this is a workshop session, we can talk about a motion on the table.
Just, I mean, I guess the biggest question is, you know, do we, do we want to maintain a seven-member planning commission? This was some, when, when I joined council in 2012, we were a five-member planning commission, and we increased the planning commission to seven members, so that we would have more people in the borough involved in the creation of the Form Base Code and be involved in be involved in the zoning discussion, just for greater participation. And now that work is done, and all those people are still interested in serving on planning commission, the planning commission is a seven-member body, and it could be as small as three. So I don't know what the right answer is, I'm just, I'm just saying there is a question.
It's a policy decision, the council should consider.
And, and I also believe that Michelle Condo's been serving the planning commission now for a while, and I certainly would like to support her in her desire to reappoint. So that would be, I'm not making the motion now, but I'm saying I'm not, I'm not, by suggesting we ask the question of what is the, is the planning commission in the right size, I'm not suggesting that we not reappoint Michelle Condo. I think that would also be the left people to do. It's just, we could go to six members, though.
I did some homework on this, because this has been one of my weak areas, and I'm not going to divulge every conversation I had, but it would be my inclination that it'd be prudent to reappoint Michelle and not enlarge the body further. I mean, Michelle, Michelle Condo is clearly deserving, and we're lucky that she wants to stay on. From people involved in planning with much more expertise than I, it seems that given our size, and our current plate of issues before it, do we really need to have as big of a planning commission? That's just my thought, but, you know, I'm not wed to it, and someone can show me how I'm wrong if I am.
I actually like having a larger planning commission, I think this is such an important commission, I think, given the really impressive applicants that we got for the position, to have a diversity of experience and voice, I don't see why not.
Okay. Anybody else have a thought?
I think, I understood it as a temporary expansion, so I would be comfortable with going back to a smaller number.
Michelle.
I'd go with Rob said, I think that's probably.
Gigi?
It, it seems that if it's, the building zoning has kind of been collapsed, that it kind of makes sense, but, but we always have the ability to go back, and if it doesn't work or not working, to expand again, right? So we could always.
Well, I, I actually agree with, think with Rob and Bob and.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And Michelle, I think that a good path forward for us might be just not making the appointment.
Right.
But you, you're leaving the option open, we're not amending the ordinance, we're not changing the size of the body. We see how things go.
Yeah.
And at any moment in time, with basically no notice, council can make it, make an appointment if we feel need.
Right.
And if we don't, let's see if we can't kind of work our way maybe through attrition to back to five, and see how that is, and then it's, you know, council can decide.
So to Gigi's point, we could, if this turns to be problematic, we can always revisit the number, it's not set in stone.
I mean, literally, if they have a divided body that matters, you know, three and three, we can, we can just make an appointment.
I think I also would like to say to Cindy's point, that the, we, we got several interested people who are applying for the planning commission, who are extraordinarily qualified for being on the voting issue. So I'm wondering if we can keep those resumes and letters of interest, and just make sure that next year this time, when we have another vacancy, or two, there may be two next year, that we at least look at that same pool of applicants if they're still interested. So we're not saying no to anyone that's interested, that we keep, that we hold on to those.
Can I, can I ask a, I guess it's not, it's not an amendment, it's not a motion, but to what you're saying, could we just send a one-sentence email to each one, I don't want to give you a lot of work, that basically just said, "Would you like to be kept in queue and be automatically considered for the next vacancy?" And then they can be in queue for consideration.
So they don't have to talk.
But they have to opt in.
Sure, sure.
And then what do you, this is your idea.
That works for me, that's kind of what I was hoping.
All right, I'll take a, I'll take a motion, it seems to be a consensus.
For Michelle?
Yeah.
My second? Oh, I mean, the motion to retain Michelle Condo in her current position on planning commission for the term of whatever that is, and.
It's a four-year term.
A four-year term. There you have it, thank you.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in, any discussion?
I just, I thought we were voting on two people, so I have someone who I, who has a really important historical preservation experience.
Go for it.
That I, I think is, is really critical, and there's change of lots of progress in the borough, so I didn't compare Michelle Condo to this particular candidate, so.
Okay.
So do we need an opportunity to maybe put this appointment for planning commission on hold until next meeting, so we can give time to review and?
I think they have the motion.
There's been, but yeah, there's those.
I'm just trying to be careful, if I'm the only person that's interested.
I think that was a comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I recognize that, and I appreciate you trying to be inclusive there.
That's right.
Okay.
If nobody has a chance to read it, give it to me.
Aye. Any opposed? None? Unanimous. Okay, thank you. So planning commission. Okay, that brings us right along to library.
Oh, library.
That's all we left.
Can I make a comment for this?
You sure can.
So I messed this up potentially. I think I messed the library. Ellen had informed me that she had been appointed to the library board, and she was very excited. And I explained to her she hadn't been appointed to the library board, and that we were voting in January. And she had said, "No, no." I spoke to Linda, I just started in January, and I said, "No, no, we haven't voted, we need to apply." I think so, but it was so.
She was appointed by the library, but we don't know for sure.
So one of their spots, not the one the council wants.
Not the council spots, right.
So she, so we can't appoint her to our spot?
Well, I, I want that confirmed, though. So I'm suggesting that perhaps.
So maybe we should wait on this one.
Because we could.
Call her.
I did call her, but.
No, no, let's, I think, it would be nice, if, if, just having just dealt with the library board and budget season, and this is not, in fact, I mean, if we had to move tonight, there's two great candidates now, but assuming if Ellen can't be there, it would be nice if we.
If we knew that, right.
I think that there's a lot of room to try and increase participation in the library board. It's, I would, I think it would be terrific for Narberne if anyone's interested, assuming that council and President Mutrick does decide to, to put off the vote to the next meeting, it would be nice if other community members who may be interested would apply to be on library board. I just, for a host of reasons, I think it would serve Narberne if we had a larger pool of applicants for this particular board.
I'm going to, I'm going to go a little further. I think, yes, we should delay, because we need to figure out what the heck is going on.
No, it's good you said so.
It doesn't make a material difference if we wait two weeks. I would like to make an appeal to the community for applicants to the library board who have deep financial experience. And I'm saying that because looking at the library board as it is, there are a lot of people who love education, they love reading, they love the, the community public space that the library provides, the way it brings our community together. All of that is really running a business, and I know from the budget season.
Yeah.
That there is, there is, there is an opportunity for someone with good financial background, who really understands how to run a business, how to manage it, how to make sure that expenses are standard controlled, and also do the financial reporting that is going to be required by us in terms of budget requests, and the information that we're going to need to continue supporting the library, to be on that board, and really make everybody's job a lot easier and more pleasant, because they can kind of pick up that ball. So if you're out there, we would love to see your application. There is nothing wrong with these candidates, but they're all deeply qualified to serve on a library board, I'm just seeing a specific need, and I want to call out, and maybe there's someone out there who can help us.
Well said, thank you.
I want to thank Regina Watson, who served on the library board as an appointment from .
Ten years?
Ten years, she served on the library board.
And provided some financial.
And provided the financial connect.
Because she has tax liability.
Because she knows. And so thank you, Regina, very much for your years of service, and, and we do appreciate, and sorry to see you go, but you're going on to other stuff.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to defer on that one.
Yeah.
And I believe that's everything that was on our, on our plate.
Yep.
So now we can move to informational announcements.
Oh.
Are there any? Esther Metzger?
I do just want to, I'll be brief. Just because of a, of the circumstance of the calendar, we have an unusual amount of action to take in two weeks regarding subdivision and land development. We have four tentative sketch plans and a conditional use hearing, and all conditional use decision which may be coming down. The tentative sketch plan for 100 Forest Avenue, tentative sketch plan for 203 Haverford Avenue. The applicants at 114 Forest Avenue also submitted a tentative sketch plan, and we have a minor subdivision plan for 838 slash 840 Montgomery Avenue, what was our old Sun Valley?
Sun Valley.
Thank you. So those documents are on SharePoint, review from the local planning commissioners were coming regarding the minor subdivision, which is taking two lots that, making, taking the two lots that are there and turning them into one. So that one's pretty much a simple abstract subdivision plan approval, the other three, obviously.
But it's a lot for us to go through in one day.
Yeah, yeah.
It's what's good we do, these appointments.
I didn't plan it that way, it's just when the applications came in, so.
And there were rules about that.
Yes, go ahead.
And has there been a follow-up of the woman who recently purchased the.
Shops at Penn Valley.
Shops at Penn Valley with the parking lot?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, that's been followed up by multiple.
Roll call, Winger.
Okay, so I would like, I don't anticipate council will take any official action following, but I would like to adjourn into another executive session to discuss the separate personnel matter.
Okay, so we take five?
We can take five.
Is he meeting?
I'm not going to adjourn the meeting, just in case, but I, 99.99%, if we do anything, I'll let you know.
No, I have to stop.
Okay. All right, we're back in public session, we just had an executive session to discuss the personnel matter. We have no action to take, we'll take a motion for adjournment.
A second.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.